This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the December 6, 2023 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on the township website for public access. At this time, I'd like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 3D, under announcements, I'll turn it over to Commissioner David Kennedy for announcement of his resignation from the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. When I was driving up here this evening, I was trying to think what I was going to say. I will try to be brief, but I do want to cover a couple of points. Twenty-six years ago, I came into this building and applied for, be on the Planning Commission, and Commissioner Martha Nolan interviewed me. And during the course of that interview, with my background and some law enforcement, she felt it would be better that I serve on the Public Safety Committee instead of Planning. And I agreed with her and I thought I was right. And for 26 years, I served on the Planning, the Public Safety Committee for South Whitehall Township, and I've enjoyed every, every time, every meeting. During that year, Martha Nolan also suggested that I run for school board. And I thought about that, and the commitment that you have to make was what I was concerned about. It was a two-year term, not four. But I thought, you know what, I can hang in there for two years, so I did. And then I ran six more times for four, four years each. The last term that I ran, I was approached by some individuals as a school board director and seeing what was going on within South Whitehall Township to run for commissioner. Basically, it was a commissioner who made a comment that actually pissed me off. And that's what I said, and that's when I said, I'm going to run for commissioner. So I talked to Diane Kelly at the time, Mike Walk, and ran it by them and asked their opinion, and thought about it long and hard with my wife, my family, and decided to do it. And it's been fantastic. So I want to mention a few people, and I know I'm going to miss people, and it's not intentional. I do apologize. But first, I want to thank the voters and stakeholders for South Whitehall Township. I am handing in my resignation tonight. I will forward it to Tom and Diane Kelly as board president tomorrow in writing. But when I decided to run for commissioner, I was fortunate enough that I had a young kid who was like 20, 18 or 19, couldn't even drink, be my campaign manager, and that was Jacob Roth. And he did one heck of a job for me. Obviously, I'm here. I was also fortunate enough at the time, because there were going to be two people running, to be introduced to Monica Hodges. And Monica and I basically ran as a team, and it was absolutely tremendous. The support that I think we gave each other, her husband, I think my wife, was, was great. And I never, will never forget that. Diane Kelly, at the time, she was not in president of the board, was also very, very supportive along with Mike Walk when he was here. Then Brad stepped into the picture, and that, and the three of us did get elected, and it's been great. So I do want to thank the residents, the voters of South Whitehall Township. They, they have to realize the strength they have in the board that's up here. So many times I hear people resign and said, I did this and I did that. Well, I didn't do anything. We as a board did it. Being in the school board where you need five in majority, or up here where you need three. No one person can do it. And I work up here with a tremendous board, and I know that will continue on with the new board that's going to be sworn in in January. So I want to thank the board for what they've done. I want to thank Tom Petrucci, who came on as township manager, for him accepting that position. He has such foresight into this township, and he digs into everything that's going on. Herb Bender has been an absolute godsend to the township. People should realize that. He works 24/7 for South Whitehall Township. And if you don't believe me, unfortunately, I had, I had the opportunity via email or a township phone to see when he's out on calls within the township, Mike Elias and Herb and his department, Greg Adams and Chris and what they've done in community development. I don't see Dave Manhart here, but you know, I want to thank Jeff Kelly for what he's done in emergency management in our fire departments and chief and everybody in the township. Again, the hardest part was we were thrown a curveball, my wife and I, and we jumped on it. And I did move last week, on the 30th, we sold our home in South Whitehall Township. So tonight, I officially resigned my position as South Whitehall Board of Commissioners. I saw Tom last Thursday and handed in my phone, computer, and key card. And I just want to thank everybody for what they've done for me and continue on for South Whitehall, because I'm not going to forget up here, after all the years I've spent here on the board, not just here but in school board, but also 33 years living in the township. So thank you all. If I missed anybody. Trish, Trish is not here? Well, you're filling in. I mean, I don't want to miss anybody, but I'm sure I will and have, but it's not intentional. So I did get invited back to the lunch Friday, so maybe I can, if I see them then, I'll, Tracy also, for everything you've done for me and, and you know, always keeping me straight. So thank you all. I appreciate what you've done and congratulations and good luck with everything. And I do want to congratulate the new board who was sworn in in January. So Brad, we go last time I see you. So thank you for your help. Everybody to my right, everybody to my left has been an absolute godsend, and I do appreciate your help. So thank you very much.
Dave, thank you. Well said. Gosh, it's hard to follow you. I just have a very brief statement that I would like to make. Certainly want to thank you for your dedication to this community. First, as an elected official for the last two years, 22 years' service on South Whitehall Public Safety Commission, and 25 years on Parkland School Board. The words "thank you" don't adequately address or stress the gratitude for the truly remarkable and inspiring gifts you've given graciously in volunteering your time and talent for our community. It is my honor and pleasure to have served with you. We wish you the best. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before I?
Okay. Dave, I'm so sad for us. But I'm so happy for your new journey. And you're so close to your family now and that beautiful little grandson. And thank you for decades of service to this community in so many different capacities. It's unbelievable what you've done for our community. I thank you so much. And I have to stop now. Thank you.
Hard to follow, my two co-commissioners and of course, you, Commissioner Kennedy. I want to thank you as well. You and I met each other almost three years ago. We had never met each other, didn't know each other. I knew you were on the school board, but I didn't know that much about you. And when you decided you wanted to run for commissioner, you and I met. And you told me about your approach to government, to life, to working with other people. And since that, that first meeting, I have been impressed with your candidness, with your common sense, no BS approach to, to government. It's, it's a breath of fresh air, whether it be on the school board or here in, in South Whitehall. You've, you've brought so much to this, this community. And there are so many residents and families and employees of the school district, of the township, of LCTI, of, you know, the past two years of your service in, in South Whitehall just sort of scratches the, the surface of your service to the community. There are so many people that, that I think owe their success in part to, to your work and your dedication. So I will miss you. I'm glad you're not going too far away. You're, you're just down the turnpike. When I make my daily commute down to Villanova, you're only 10 minutes away from me there. But I really, I will miss you being a part of this board. You know, as a, as a mentor and a friend to me, you've, you've been very helpful. And I'll never forget that, so.
There are no other comments. I do have a distinguished service award to present to Commissioner David M. Kennedy. South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners, staff, and citizens would like to recognize you for your outstanding public service as a member of the Board of Commissioners. You have, we acknowledge your exemplary performance and your commitment to this community. We award you this distinguished service award, and we congratulate you on behalf of the board and the entire citizens and businesses of South Whitehall Township. Congratulations. I'm going to step out front for a quick photo.
And if the board will allow it, Rob Hodges would like to make a comment online. Go ahead, Rob. You, you can unmute yourself.
Okay. I don't know if David's still there. And can you hear me?
Yes, he is. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So just going to be very quick. I couldn't let David leave without saying something. As a resident of South Whitehall, David, I want to thank you for everything you've done for the township. The changes you've helped implement, implement will be, we felt for many years, if not decades, and the township's a better place due to your contributions. We owe you a debt of gratitude for helping to turn the township around. Thank you for that. And for me personally, as a friend, I simply want to say I'll miss you. And thank you for being such a good friend to me and Monica.
Thank you, Rob. Dave, I'd like to give you your name plaque as well. We wish you the best, Dave. Thank you very much. Tom, if you would briefly just review for the public, the process moving forward now that we've got a vacancy on the Board of Commissioners?
Certainly.
Thank you.
So when there are vacancies in an elective office in a first-class township, the Board of Commissioners have up to 45 days to accept the resignation after it is tendered in writing. If the Board of Commissioners does, do not accept the resignation or does not accept, I'm sorry, the resignation becomes effective 45 days in, by default. Once the resignation is effective, the Board of Commissioners have only 30 days by which to appoint a successor to fill the vacancy. This appointment would last until the next municipal election in this case. So given the fact the board has a citizen board appointment policy, it generally recommends that you advertise the availability of the position, then you conduct interviews. I would respectfully recommend that the board accept the resignation at a subsequent meeting and then plan accordingly.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening who'd like to address the board? Yes, ma'am. You would come up to the microphone, press that little button, and make sure the green light is on so that we can all hear you. Very good. If you just give us your, no? Okay, excellent. If you just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Denise Flick, and I live at 34 South 41st Street. I'm attending today to talk about the 62.54% increase that's coming to us next year for our trash bill. I'm sure a lot of residents are unaware of it. I happen to become aware of it, and as you can imagine, that is a big shock. That is a huge increase. So I'm here today to kind of let you know that I'm complaining, obviously. I know that the contract's signed. I'm sure a lot of residents are going to complain, but there's a few things that I wanted to address and see if you have considered. Number one, do we have to have a contract through the township? Can individual residents just get their own waste management? There, I know that there's a lot of towns in the area that do that. Everybody's kind of able to call whoever they want, bring them in. That might reduce the amount. But if we're going to go forward with this, and I know it's a five-year contract, but that's still a huge amount of money that people are going to have to put out next year and moving forward. My concern is, I'm a one-person household. I put out garbage once a month. I'm going to pay $700 to put out garbage once a month? That's insane. My neighbor has five adults. They're, they're obviously creating a whole lot more waste than I am. So is there a consideration for household, the size of the household? The more people you have in the house, the more you pay, which makes sense because you're creating more waste. The other thing is, if you're not going to make any concessions like that, then I would like to know how I go about returning my trash cans, and I'll worry about my trash myself. I'll take it to work. I'll take it to my parents' house. $700 a year is just insanity. I'm never going to create enough waste for that. And so those are my complaints and suggestions. And I know, I've never done this before, so I don't know how we go from here.
Very good. Thank you, Denise, for bringing your questions and comments before us tonight. Tom, I don't know if you've got any information to address. I know we've got some information on the website that actually answers some of these questions.
Yeah, I can address from a very high-level perspective. So basically, the township was informed earlier this year that the current contract was coming to an end. So we had the waste management contract, gave us very little time to adjust, to make a major change to the contract. So we've, we kept the services essentially the same with a few tweaks. And then basically, we are discovering as a township that almost all municipalities that are going out to bid, even for their current contracts, are experiencing high-level percentage increases of, to some extent. So the contract price that you see now, it's five years. It's very much going to be on the lower end, hope we're, we're thinking by the end of that contract, based on the preliminary numbers that we're seeing. And that's why the longer term was, was selected. It's unfortunately just a testament to what is occurring in the waste industry overall. It's certainly not something that was well-received by residents and by the Board of Commissioners and management. But the township currently does not have an alternative by which to allow people to have their own services. So right now, the contract for residential property owners is, is pretty clear that, that it pertains to the residential properties, and you have to go with the single hauler. Separate from that, the board is recognizing that it's prudent to engage in a study by which the entire program, including recycling, solid waste, and yard waste, can be evaluated to see if there's ways to examine how, how the, the contract is structured, if there's, if there's any efficiencies that can be realized. That's actually on the agenda tonight for, for the initial discussion with the board, and that study would be conducted, you know, throughout next year. So it's a little bit of the overall waste industry is, is impacted by the, the global economy factors, the domestic economy factors, such as increased fuel, increased commodities, increased personnel costs for health insurance, for wages, just so they can retain their current employees. It's, it's, it's not a good situation. And unfortunately, you know, the end, the end user, the resident has, is bearing the brunt of that, of that issue. So the township is proactively at least looking to see what options are available for the future.
Okay. So are your studies going to include like a study of the size of a household and take that into consideration?
Yes.
So that is happening. So when would that go into effect then?
It would have to not, it wouldn't be able to go into effect until the next contract, but the study's going to take some time to go through it.
So that's a whole five years?
Correct.
Okay. So if I wanted to just return my recycle bins and trash bins, how does that work?
That, that is not an option.
Why?
Because the township has a single hauler, and it's requiring, it requires residents to use the service.
Right. But if the resident isn't using the service?
It doesn't make that distinction.
You realize how unfair that is?
It's, I understand what you're saying. There's no way around it, though. And this is not a South Whitehall issue. Any, any municipality that, it's a, it's a national issue. Any municipality that has a single hauler has the same exact problem. There's no way to really discern who is using the service and who is not on an equitable, equitable basis. However, you can look at the, the exact quantities that are being used by households, to your point. But unfortunately, unfortunately, our current contract does not allow for that. Like I said, we, we had received notification in a very short timeframe by which to put out a bid that our current hauler's contract was ending. We had to adjust very quickly, put a contract out, and it's the same exact service that you're receiving now, give or take. But that's, that's what the price is. And that was verified by three haulers submitting prices to that effect. So you're actually getting the lowest bidder. The two other bidders submitted even higher prices.
I read the article.
So that's the cost of the service.
Okay. Well, those are my complaints and my suggestions.
And your suggestions are well taken, and I, we will incorporate those into the study. I don't have an answer. The board doesn't have an answer. Township doesn't have an answer for the reality of this situation right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I will just add one thing to that. Your concerns were my concerns, and your way of thinking was my way of thinking. And in approaching this study, unfortunately, we're put in a position now where every municipality is, is facing the same thing, if not worse, right? Most municipalities are, are closer to 100% increase. And the reality is that most of those municipalities, they're going to go through this process. They're going to have the new contract with, with a massive increase that, that puts a burden on residents. And then in three or five years, whatever their contract term is, they're probably going to have to do it again because the costs of trash are not going down. Where I think South Whitehall wants to be a little different, and this is something I stressed throughout the process, throughout the summer, when, when our board was considering this, and when we accepted the contract in September, is when we get to the end of this contract, we don't want to be in that same position, right? We want to be able at that point, in five years, when the city, when Upper McConge, when all the other municipalities are going to tackle on another 60 to 100% increase, we, we want to come in well under that. And whether that be just a smaller increase at that point, whether that be a reduction in cost, it's, it's a horrible situation for, for every resident, for, for all of us. It's, it's, it's horrible. But we don't want this to happen again. And I, you know, as long as I'm here, it's going to be a focus of mine. Because I don't want to put residents in this position ever again. Because it's, it's, you're right, it's not fair. It's not fair at all. It's not fair to the residents. It's not fair to the township. But it's unfortunately the, the way the world is. So hopefully with the thorough detail that this study's going to address, everything from routes to usage to what our potential options are, you know, I'm hopeful that by the end of this contract, and at the time the study's done, whenever it's implemented, you know, that, that we're, not just on the low end for all the municipalities in the area, but on the low end where it's more affordable for residents. So your concerns are well taken, and thank you for approaching us. And if you know of anyone that has the same concerns, tell them to communicate them to us, because...
Think as you have more residents become aware of it, you're going to get a lot more complaints. I, I think a lot of people are in the dark about it. That's actually another thing. It would have been nice for, for the township to notify people when you sign the contract, this is what's coming, so they could prepare. People budget, they're not budgeted for that.
Yes, we are sending a mailer out. You should be getting it in the next week or so.
But don't we have to pay by January 1st? No?
You would pay by the, the first quarter.
Okay. All right. So it would be more like April.
Right, we will be.
That gives a little time.
Yes.
For people to adjust budgets.
And I also want to stress that the, the, the goal and how we structure the, the payment, that it would stay the same throughout that five-year period.
Right.
So you won't see any increases from that initial increase.
Right, understood.
The other issue I just want to mention too, which I didn't mention, is that disposal costs are also going up because the number of landfills in the Commonwealth are decreasing. With each landfill that shuts down, that, that then raises the price for, for all the other landfills that are still in service. Again, these are all things out of our control.
Right.
Doesn't help the situation.
No, it doesn't help. But I needed to come and voice it and at least throw out what I was thinking, or my mindset was, to make sure that somebody considers those options.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, Denise. I thank you for coming here and voicing your concerns. I know when we had advertised this summer, and when we had our refuse meeting, we had a special meeting this summer and went over all the contract bids. It was sickening when I saw the increase. I was, and I felt like, my goodness, what do we do? Because we have three bids and each one stunk. No pun intended. They were awful. But I encourage you to keep in touch, keep in touch with our township manager, and see how this process and how this study is going as we go through it. This is all a learning process for us too. And I think it's really good that we're trying to be a little proactive for the next contract. But please keep in touch. Please check the website and look at our BOC agenda. And when you see something, you know, reach out and ask about it. And you may see it, again, you may see an update, but please feel free to come anytime, and please feel free to reach out. We're all here for you. Thank you.
I don't want to belabor this any further, but thank you to the commissioners and Tom for your comments. And the only comment I would add, Denise, and to any citizens listening, to please check our website. I know when we met over the summer for this issue, we did direct staff to make sure this information was posted on the website as we were going through the process so that the public would be aware. So we are trying to push information out as soon as we have it to make sure everyone's aware. Even though it's not good news, we do put it out there for you. So thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the board this evening? Anyone online, Chris?
No one online.
Very good. Moving on then to Agenda Item 5, our meeting minutes from the November 15th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meetings. They've been distributed to the boards. Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Second, all of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. To Item 6A, ordinances. Previously advertised for possible adoption, an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Fixing the property tax rate for the fiscal year 2024. Levying a real estate tax for general revenue purposes and for fire tax purposes for the fiscal year 2024. Reaffirming the current tax reaffirming the current tax rates provided for within Chapter 328 Taxation of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township, and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the Township government during the 2024 fiscal year, providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. And I'll ask our township manager to present this agenda item.
Thank you. Section 1709 of the First Class Township Code requires the Board of Commissioners to fix the property rate for the 2024 fiscal year for real property taxes in conjunction with the approval of the 2024 annual budget. Each year, the township must pass an ordinance or resolution to adopt the property tax rate. The proposed ordinance was summarized by Commissioner Kelly. There is no proposed change to the property tax rates for 2024. The budget includes the assumption and estimating revenues available in 2024 from property taxes. The overall rate is 3.31975 mils, which that is 0.47 for fire tax and 2.849750 for overall general purposes. So with that, I would respectfully request a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said tax ordinance for the fiscal year 2024?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Then to Item 6B, we have a motion to advertise ordinance regarding establishment of the Environmental Advisory Council, and I'll ask our long-range planner, Chris Stroller, to present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. If the board recalls, one of the implementation items out of the comprehensive plan was to review some of the advisory boards that we have, the volunteer advisory boards. Earlier this year, staff looked at three related environmental advisory boards, those being the Green Advisory Council established by resolution in 2019, the Environmental Advisory Council established by ordinance in 1974, and the Air Pollution Board established by ordinance in 1976. If the board recalls, at the September 20th meeting of this year, we reviewed sort of the purpose of these separate advisory boards, and staff made the recommendation to combine all of them into a newly revised Environmental Advisory Council. We looked at a draft ordinance updating the current Environmental Advisory Council ordinance at that September meeting. It has since been sent to legal for review. Staff has made the small adjustments and comments from legal. So now you have that updated Environmental Advisory Council ordinance in your packet in front of you, and staff is requesting permission to advertise the ordinance as written and then schedule a hearing for adoption in January. So this would combine the purpose of all three of these boards into one new Environmental Advisory Council. What you'll see is, we have mentioned this before, in the way that the township code is written currently, tonight we'll present a couple of items. This is the first of some of the other implementation that we have discussed in sort of shifting around some of the boards and advisory councils so that they're more consistent with each other within the township code. This is the first step in that process, so you'll see a little bit of shifting here. So in this ordinance, under the current township code, in Part 1 Administrative Legislation, the existing Chapter 17, Article 7 Environmental Advisory Council will be removed and left as reserved. The new Environmental Advisory Council as written in here will become Chapter 17, Article 5. And Chapter 85, under Part 2 General Legislation of the Township Code, Chapter 85 is air pollution, which talks about the Air Pollution Board. That will be removed as it's no longer relevant because all of the, the purpose of that chapter is now into the new Environmental Advisory Council ordinance. So if there are any questions on the process, we can try to answer those. Otherwise, this is the first in a series of steps, two of which you'll also see this evening. So staff is requesting permission to advertise.
Very good, Chris. Thank you for presenting this agenda item and for preparing this for our consideration. Wonderful to take these boards and put them into one environmental council in a much more efficient way. So I don't have any particular questions on this. I'll open up to the board to see if anybody had any questions or comments, any comments from the public. Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to advertise said ordinance? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And to Item 6C, motion to advertise ordinance amendment regarding the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to present.
Thank you. This is much like Chris's presentation. This is the second of the boards and commissions we're looking at. This is a draft ordinance to repeal the existing Article 3 Landscape and Shade Tree Commission within Chapter 17 of the Codified Ordinance and replace it with a new Article 7 Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. The existing Article 3 was adopted in 1969, taken almost word for word from the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code. The current Article 3 includes regulation of the composition and conduct of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, but a larger part is the regulations of trees within the public rights of way. So for some time now, the staff has wanted to amend the regulation regarding street trees. And with the adoption of the comprehensive plan and looking at boards in general, we now have the opportunity to look at them in a more holistic manner, develop a consistent, comprehensive template for each board, and then implement it. So this template, if you examine the EAC regulations, it looks very similar to what's being offered here, and it will for all boards that will go under this. So this ordinance and the one that follows, which is under trees, are the staff's best effort to separate the regulations governing the composition and conduct of the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission from the regulation of street trees, to update both sets of regulations to reflect the township's current goals and needs, and to start the process of updating the regulations of all boards and commissions using the template that we introduced back in July 19th to this board. For a little history, after that was done, at your September 20th meeting, we introduced the draft language for this Article 17, I'm sorry, Chapter 17, Article 7 Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. The board then directed staff to send the draft to Zeter Law for legal review. That was completed mid-October, and the changes were incorporated. Staff made some revisions in early November, and now believe this draft ordinance is ready for final review by the board and for advertisement for a hearing and possible adoption in January. If it's your pleasure, I can go over individually the changes proposed, or I can simply answer questions.
I will leave it to the board. I think we can just have questions if there are any. Given to us in advance and we have an opportunity to review. Does the board have any questions at this time? The public have any questions? Do I have a motion to advertise said ordinance? Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
And the third ordinance is, and D, a motion to advertise ordinance for Regulation of Trees, Chapter 330. And Chris Stroller, would you present this one as well?
Sure. As Greg just talked about, the requirement for the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission to be revised in its ordinance to establish a structure for that board, staff has looked at the need to outline the purpose, the intent of regulating street trees, and that is, it's more helpful in this separate ordinance. This also addresses some historical issues of properly allowing the enforcement of regulating those street trees and spelling out the process and the purpose of requiring permits for the removal and trimming of street trees. So if there are specific questions about this, I know you received it in advance. Between Greg and I, I think we can try to answer any questions you might have about this. But really, we see these going hand in hand with the updated Shade Tree Commission ordinance and then this Shade Tree ordinance, which sort of directs what the Shade Tree Commission is essentially tasked to do, along with better aligning staff duties in the enforcement and the promotion of street trees.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate your work on this and bring it forward to the board. I just have an overarching question, as this would be a new regulation for the township. Education of our citizens is always important when we've got a new ordinance that we're aware of. At some point, will there be an educational outreach to our community to make them aware once this is enacted?
Yes. So I'd say certainly between Greg Adams and myself and other staff, having this ordinance and having it clear at this level in the township code, this helps us in our explanation to residents. Oftentimes, we are reactive in answering questions. The township does have information on the website. We have a whole tree page that outlines some of this. Once these ordinances are adopted, we have talked, the staff is looking at updating some of the resource materials on our website. We've talked about advertising this in the newsletter coming out. Certainly, seasonality is big when we talk about trees. And I also see this as a very useful piece of information for the future Environmental Advisory Council and Shade Tree Commission members.
Very good, thank you. I'll open up to the board if there's any questions.
Chris, I do have a question for you. Will this be, I know you said it's on the website, but will there be something pretty bold on the front page directing people where to go or alerting people that this is a change?
Sure, yeah. Definitely with the adoption of this ordinance. And then I think also Greg and I have certainly talked about pointing people to that tree page is a really helpful resource, whether you're talking about street trees or just trees in general. There's a lot of good information on there. And as staff, we've been kind of throwing around ideas of what we can do to even simplify that information and have it more readily available, not just specifically to the benefits of trees and our urban forest, but also the better understanding, the regulation behind street trees. It's kind of a gray area sometimes for people that might not think about it all the time.
Any other board questions? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to advertise said ordinance? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Don't go anywhere. Chris, I have one more. Agenda Item 7A, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, dissolving the Green Advisory Council, and Chris, if you'd present.
Yes, thank you. This is the last of the shifting of boards and such tonight. So the Green Advisory Council was established in 2019 by resolution. So as part of cleaning up that process and merging everything into the new Environmental Advisory Council, we're asking the board to actually dissolve the Green Advisory Council, which is a separate board, also by resolution. There is a resolution prepared on page 53 of your packet that explains the dissolution. And if the board so wishes, we can move forward with dissolving the Green Advisory Council and then the, along with the Environmental Advisory Council, we would remove the Air Pollution Board. And moving forward, we would have one clear direction for the Environmental Advisory Council.
Very good, Chris. My only question is, have the volunteers that currently sit on Green Advisory been advised of this change?
Yes. I communicate with them regularly. Each month around the time that we have usually a scheduled meeting, they're all very aware. I think they're all very excited and interested in participating in the new Environmental Advisory Council. And I know the current members that we have for that are looking forward to kind of this cleanup and resurgence in new direction here. Also make another little plug here. I know we'll talk about it later, but we will have positions available if this moves forward with the Environmental Advisory Council. So that's something that we're certainly looking for volunteers interested in this sort of thing to consider, along with the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission.
Thank you. Are there any board comments or questions on this? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt resolution dissolving the Green Advisory Council?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Then to Item 7B, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the execution of an encroachment agreement with Buckeye Pipeline Transportation LLC required for the Jordan Creek Greenway in Covered Bridge Park. I'll ask Township Manager Tom Pichucci to present.
Thank you. Buckeye Pipeline Transportation has utility facilities in the vicinity of the planned extension to the Jordan Creek Greenway from Weir Mill Road to Lapp Road through Covered Bridge Park, which is currently subject to a $1 million Tessa-funded grant. Buckeye has approved the township executing the required encroachment agreement to allow for the 10-foot-wide shared-use path to cross their utility facilities. Should at any time in the future Buckeye need to maintain, repair, operate, alter, or remove the pipeline and the entrenchment, i.e. the path, interferes with Buckeye's ability to do so, they will have the right to modify or remove the shared-use path with no notification. This covenant runs with the land and is permanently binding upon the township. The encroachment agreement is necessary to allow the shared-use path to go in as planned. Project is currently available for bid via the Penn dot ECMS system with bids due to be let tomorrow. So at this time, I would ask for approval of the encroachment agreement by, effectuated by the resolution.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this resolution? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution authorizing the execution of an encroachment agreement with Buckeye Pipeline Transportation required by the Jordan Creek Greenway in Covered Bridge Park project?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. 7C, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, establishing rates, rents, charges, and delinquent charges for furnishing water service to consumers and establishing the circumstances under which water service is discontinued and municipal liens filed. Tom, if you'd present?
Thank you. So official action is requested from the board in order to approve the aforementioned resolution to confirm the fact that there are no rate increases to provide water services to our customers, our residents. So if there's any questions on the resolution, we can go through those. If not, it's simply adopting what will be in place for '24, which is already in place for '23, so that our residents won't experience a change as a result of this official action.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Any comments or questions on this resolution? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution confirming rate of service charges for water, no change for 2024 from 2023? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. 7D, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, establishing rates, rents, charges, and delinquent charges for furnishing sanitary sewage services to owners and/or consumers and establishing the circumstances under which water service is discontinued and municipal liens filed. If you'd present?
Thank you. Similar to water, there are no changes to the rates for sewer for 2024. So the bills that were received by residents for 2023 will be based on the same payment structure. So unless there are any questions, I would simply ask for a motion to approve the resolution to put that rate into effect.
Very good, thank you. Any comments or questions? Any public comment? We have a motion to adopt said resolution confirming rate of service charges for sewer, no change for 2024 from 2023. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. 7E, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving and adopting municipal solid waste collection charges for calendar year 2024. If you'd present?
Yes.
Yes. So as discussed earlier this evening, South Whitehall Township's current residential municipal solid waste collection disposal and recycling services contract expires on December 31st. On September 6, 2023, the Board of Commissioners voted to award a five-year contract to JP Mascaro. The rate, which would be $660 per each residential established unit, would, the resolution tonight that you would approve, would cover that rate for '24, but the intention is also to carry through that rate through the life of the contract, as also indicated this evening. This resolution also provides for a low-income senior discount credit, which the program would be $30 per quarter, a discount would be in place, so $120 per year, which we would base the criteria on whether the resident was eligible for the PACE program. So that has been budgeted and also provided for in the resolution. So again, if unless there's any questions, I would seek a motion to approve the resolution as submitted.
Thank you, Tom. And thank you for adding a senior low-income discount credit or refuse. Are there any board comments or questions? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution confirming municipal solid waste collection charges for calendar year 2024?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. 7F, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving the budget for the 2024 calendar fiscal year beginning on the first day of January 2024 and ending on the last day of December 2024. Tom, if you would present.
Thank you. So official action is requested from the board in order to approve the 2024 South Whitehall Township final adopted budget pursuant to Article 17, Section 1701 of the First Class Township Code. The budget must be made available for a period of 20 days after advertising said public notice period. And then the Board of Commissioners, after making any revisions as appropriate, adopt the final budget, not later than December 31st. The administrative staff is not recommending any changes to the budget. The township has met and actually exceeded its obligations to advertise the notice of availability of the proposed budget. As noted earlier, there are no real estate tax increases for the budget or for water and sewer. There is an increase for refuse as factored into the budget. Again, unless there's any questions, we have read the budget twice into the record for public meetings. We also had a budget special meeting. But we have Kristin Blonnik here, who is the Fund Balance Specialist, and myself and Herb and any other department heads as applicable, if you had any additional questions on the budget.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for presenting the budget for adoption this evening. I'll open it up to the board if there are any comments or questions.
I just have one comment. Oftentimes, in whether it's municipal government or the private sector, it's said that a budget is a reflection of the board's priorities. And that's true, but there's a second part. The budget is a reflection of the hard work and dedication of the staff. This budget is certainly no exception. So to everyone involved in the budget process, all the department heads, everyone in finance, Kristin, Tricia, everybody, thank you for your hard work on this. It's a reflection of all you do for the township, and I really appreciate everyone not only making the budget itself clean and understandable and a reflection of all of our priorities, but also making the budget process probably the least painful budget process any of us have seen in South Whitehall in recent years. So to everyone who has spent many months putting this together, and certainly work on next year's budget will begin just a few months, thank you. Thank you.
Well said. Commissioner Roth, you stole my thunder. I was going to make those similar comments after the vote, so please express our appreciation to all staff. Jacob has outlined, we're very grateful. There are no other comments or questions, are they from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said resolution which approves the 2024 South Whitehall Township final adopted budget? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Then item 8A, we have a motion requesting permission for Township Engineer to conduct corridor analysis of Walbert Avenue, Huckleberry Road, Ridgeview Drive, Church Road, and State Route 309. I'll ask Tom Petrucci to present.
Thank you. On October 30th, a site meeting was held with Brian Height, who is the transportation planner for the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, and Herb Bender, who is the Director of Township Operations. The site meeting was requested by the township in order to address an ongoing observed issue with wayward tractor-trailer trucks that cannot find Pope Road for the manufacturing and trucking parking areas that are situated in the general vicinity. The following was determined as a result of the site meeting. It was observed that the drivers of the tractor-trailer trucks may not be able to clearly see the overhead street sign over Route 309 at the intersection of Pope Road and Chapman's Road due to lighting and utility wires in front of the sign. It was recommended by Mr. Height for the township to engage the township engineer to contact the sign department of Penn dot District 50 to install a W-2-1 intersection sign supplemental W-16-8AP with Pope Road and Chapman's Road on the approach shoulder of Route 309 northbound in advance of the intersection. This new sign would provide enhanced awareness of the intersection and the roadway that the trucks are attempting to find. This would also help trucks turning left westbound on Chapman's Road for the growing warehousing and industrial area of the township. It was also determined that Huckleberry Road and Church Road would benefit from additional truck restriction signs at the approaches on Huckleberry Road to the intersection of Church Road. Township must be cognizant that trucks are not likely to use Church Road and instead will attempt to use Ridgeview Drive to maneuver back to SR 309. It is recommended that the current truck restriction sign on Church have a supplemental sign on both sides and move closer to the intersection for visibility. Signage examples were provided for your reference that meet the manual for uniform traffic control devices requirements. With that, the township then asked the township engineer to provide a scope of work that would meet those requests of Mr. Height. So they are listed as follows. Provide a sketch with justification to Penn dot for the installation of additional wayfinding, signage for Pope Road and Chapman's Road in the appropriate location. Provide a sketch to the township for the installation of additional signage in the appropriate locations as identified. Provide an analysis and documentation to the township for the restriction of truck traffic on Ridgeview Drive from Walbert Avenue to Huckleberry Road, and provide analysis of the intersection of Ridgeview Drive and Walbert Avenue to determine the effects of allowing trucks on Ridgeview Drive from Bulldog Drive to Walbert Avenue. The fee for the above scope was confirmed by the township engineer as not to exceed $5,400. Township engineer will invoice for their services on a time and expense basis for only those hours worked on the project in accordance with the township rate schedule. For this evening, following any discussion or questions, the township is requesting to proceed with the township engineer corridor study in an amount not to exceed $5,400 and then forward the results of said study to the attention of the and consideration of the Penn dot District 50 executive.
Thank you, Tom. My only question when I read your memo was, has this been an ongoing problem in that area with trucks not being able to?
Yes.
Wayfinding? Okay. Okay.
I didn't mean to cut you off. I just was going to ask, Tony, are you going to be conducting this study?
Our office will be, you know, the appropriate personnel for traffic and signage will be doing it, but it will be our office.
Okay. How long do you think this will take?
There's not many hours in there. I mean, we could do this quite quickly. Once we get the documents together, submit to Penn dot, we're on Penn dot's schedule, but I don't think it'll take more than a month. It won't be that long.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Then item 8B, we have a motion for permission to transfer $1,500,000 from the Water Fund to the Water Fiscal Stability Fund. Tom, if you would present this agenda item.
Thank you. So South Whitehall Township Financial Administration is respectfully requesting to transfer $1.5 million from the Water Fund to the Water Fiscal Stability Fund. The Finance Department has confirmed that this transfer will not result in any cash flow issues after accounting for all known and anticipated expenditures for the rest of this fiscal year and the beginning of the '24 fiscal year. The current annual percentage yield of the Water Fiscal Stability Fund is 5.64%, so the requested transferred amount of $1.5 million will result at this time in $7,050 in additional monthly revenue. Assuming no interest rate decreases by the Fed in '24, this will result in $84,600 in additional revenue. The balance of the Water Fiscal Stability Fund following this transferred is forecasted to result in $263,000 total revenue for '24. This is just based on the assumption there won't be any additional transfers or emergency withdrawals or any interest reductions by the Fed. However, recent reports indicate that a rate cut could occur in the spring of '24 by the Fed.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Thank you for bringing this to the board for consideration. Certainly is a wonderful opportunity to change the funding to increase our interest in particular funds. So I'm certainly in favor of that. Are there any board comments or questions on this agenda item? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. 8C, we have a motion to authorize the capital purchase of a server for video surveillance and access control systems. Tom, if you would present.
Thank you. So the township has two servers which manage video surveillance and access control for the township and the police department. One of the servers is over five years old and is no longer under warranty. In addition, the increase in camera coverage due to the recent renovation has reduced the overall time available to archive video to around 30 days. This is impacting how long investigations can be stored. Township is seeking to extend this to around 90 days. The existing server has 42 terabytes of storage, and the new one would have approximately 120 terabytes, which would allow for the additional storage capacity. The recommendation is to replace the existing server with a new server that includes a five-year warranty and additional storage to support current needs and allow for future expansion. The township did obtain a costar's quote for the server in the amount of $17,877.50 for the replacement of the server. And again, this was not a budgeted item this year, but we have the budget available under the IT budget. It is a capital purchase, thus it requires board approval. And the fact that it is no longer in, you know, Microsoft is phasing out the relative software for this program, so, you know, we didn't know that till recently. Would request a motion to approve.
Certainly. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll make that motion. Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Then to item 8D, we have a motion to approve codification project for 2024. Tom, if you would present.
Thank you. The code of the Township of South Whitehall is current through October 19th of 2022. Codification is a professional service to formally incorporate adopted ordinances into the code, both online and a hard copy. Following a review of this service last year, Township Management's staff is continuing with the previous recommendation to initiate the codification service at the conclusion of each year. As such, the proposal of that we're estimating between $2,785 to $3,615 to be conducted by general code covers ordinance numbers 1068 through 1080. Again, it's good practice to do this service every year as opposed to letting it build up so that both staff and residents can have the most recent code available on the website.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? From the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Then to item 8E, we have a motion to approve South Whitehall Landscapes Plan Technical Consultant, amount $10,000. And I'll ask Long Range Planner, Chris Stroller, to present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So if the board remembers, we have been working on the South Whitehall Landscapes Plan for the past several months. We have gone through the public engagement process. We've received a lot of information, and we are now taking all of that and putting together the draft final plan. As part of putting this together, if the board recalls, when we were working on the comprehensive plan, we had the support of the consulting firm, Michael Baker International, to help with the public engagement of the comprehensive plan and putting together the final documentation. We had originally looked at working more with Michael Baker on the comprehensive plan, and staff was able to wrap up a lot of that on our own. And so we've been talking to the Michael Baker planning team about the Landscapes Plan, which is kind of an implementation item out of the comprehensive plan. And we've been looking at working with the planning team to finalize the final document, laying out the final product of the plan, and providing graphic and document layout support. In addition to that, one of the major components of the Landscapes Plan that we've been exploring is the idea of classifying open space. And one of the items that the Michael Baker team would help us with is the preparation of a graphic and further development of the categories of open space that we've been discussing in this plan. So if you actually look on, I think it's page 146, the idea of a transect, which kind of gives you a schematic and a layout of a hierarchy of whether it be development types, or in this case, we would be looking at developing a transect of open space types ranging from level of developed to less developed, or from a management perspective, from what types of open space would require more management as opposed to less management. We believe that this graphic and this idea would be very helpful, not just in the plan, but for staff and the board and for advisory boards like the Environmental Advisory Council and residents to better understand our approach to open space preservation, what types of open space we are preserving, how, once those are protected, what our management could look like for some of that. So the idea of a transect is used widely in planning, and I know certainly talking to the planning team at Michael Baker, they're very excited. They have some of the best in the business who develop these types of graphics and ideas for all types of plans. So if you look in your packet, there's a proposal from Michael Baker. It's shown as, I think, an amendment to the original contract. Again, we had the contract for the comprehensive plan, but just to be clear, this would be a new professional services contract. This was not currently budgeted for, but in the professional services budget that we had laid out for this year, we have money left in the budget for that we could do this work with them. The total cost for the items laid out is $10,438. And if authorized tonight, we do expect the deliverables to be finalized pretty quickly, anticipated by the end of the year, if not early next year. Basically, it's a lot of graphics design support and putting the final plan together, working with our team. So what we're requesting is authorization to execute the professional services contract as outlined for the creation of the transect graphic, further development of those open space designations, and assistance with layout of the final plan.
Very good, Chris. Thank you for that explanation. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this agenda item? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Then to item 8F, we have a motion to authorize Ridge Farms Phase 1A Improvement Security Release Number 1. I'll ask our planner, Greg Adams, to present.
Thank you.
I think we're all aware of Ridge Farm Phase 1A. That's the medical office building going on northeast corner of Cedar Crest and Walbert Avenue. The project was approved by the Board of Commissioners at their April 6, 2022 meeting. The applicant has secured $3,570,877.33 improvements. The plan was recorded July 5th of this year and construction started shortly afterward. The, some of the improvements have been completed, and the applicant has requested a release of security for those improvements. Township Engineers' Office and staff conducted the inspections to confirm and document the construction of the required improvements and are authorizing a release of $239,103.48. Documentation is in your packet. We're requesting a motion to authorize the township manager to sign the security release letter to the financial institution.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any comments from the board on this agenda item? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve said motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Then to item 8G, we have a motion to authorize Penn's Crossing Waterline Construction Improvement Security Release Number 1. And Greg, if you could present.
Okay. This is an associated project with Ridge Farm. This is for a water line going across the top of the ridge from the township reservoir up on Huckleberry Ridge to the project area at Cedar Crest Boulevard. The project was approved by the Board of Commissioners at their March 2nd, 2022 meeting. The applicant secured $287,382.34 in improvements. The applicant has completed a significant amount of the improvements and has requested a release. Township Water and Sewer Engineers' Office and staff conducted the inspections to confirm and document the construction of the required improvements and are authorizing a release of $175,363.64. The documentation is in your packet, and once again, we're requesting that the board authorize township managers to sign the security release letter to the financial institution.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Any from the public? Do I have a motion to approve said motion? Moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Then to item 8, we have a motion to authorize Long's Water Technology Improvement Security Release Number 2. Greg?
Okay. Once again, Long's Water, which is on Hausman Road, that was approved by the Board of Commissioners January 19th, 2022, was recorded May 26, 2022. Construction commenced. There was already one release of security. This is the second one. Staff has looked at the, staff and engineers office has reviewed the documentation and the improvements and are authorizing a release of $11,055 total. The documentation is in your packet. There is more coming, just so you're aware, Phase 2 will be starting construction in the future. That is also currently secured. So we are once again requesting authorization for the township manager to sign the reduction letter to the financial institution.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any board questions on this agenda item? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Then to item 8I, we have a motion to waive land development requirement for Robert Ale, Upper McConge Township Minor Subdivision. And Greg, if you'd present.
Okay. This is unusual for us. This is the first one I've seen in my tenure here. What we have is an application to subdivide the property located at 6119 Hazadal Road in Upper McConge Township. Basically, they're taking an 80-acre property and carving off a small six-acre portion of it for the house and the guest house. This is deep within Upper McConge, and the only reason we're seeing this is because 12 of the acres on the far eastern part of the tract come into South Whitehall Township. And this is up north of Hazadal Road. That 12 acres in the township has no dwellings on it, has no township water and sewer, and has no road frontage. So it is kind of off on its own. Now, technically speaking, because it's in the township, SALDO applies, but the applicant has requested that we leave all of that to Upper McConge and basically wash our hands of this. I believe for a corollary, the Eck Road warehouses, which were 95% in South Whitehall Township, had a similar issue there. Upper McConge basically let us do all the reviews and we're happy with that. So this would be kind of a reverse of that process. So the engineer is here tonight, if you have any questions.
And just to clarify, Greg, staff has no objection to this?
None at all.
Very good. We'll open it up to the board if there's any comments or questions.
I do have one question, just out of curiosity, maybe you could help me out. It's a parcel with a residence on it and a guest house, but they want to subdivide it and the other would be one parcel of just open space, just land.
Open space, there are two pole buildings and two dilapidated structures. One of them, I believe, used to be a pavilion 40 or 50 years ago, and one of them, some type of an old garage or old storage. It's grown into the woods, both of these structures. But the two pole buildings are in South Whitehall Township in the northern corner of the property. But again, that is accessed off of a driveway coming off of Armstrong Street that technically comes from North Whitehall Township.
Oh.
I hit them all with this project, let me tell you. This is a good month for waiver meetings here for this one.
So that parcel, that second parcel of land, it won't be subdivided? There's not a development coming in?
No development proposed whatsoever.
Okay.
No.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's basically a no-man's land, there's no connection, no road frontage.
Correct.
Any other board comment or question? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion to waive land development?
So moved.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Wish you luck with your project. Thank you.
You too.
Moving on to agenda item 9A, Boards and Commissions Informational Items and Vacancies. Tom, if you would update us.
Yes. So upcoming meetings and events are as follows. Thursday, December 7th, 7:00 p.m., zoning hearing board. Saturday, December 9th, promptly at 4:00 p.m. through 5:00 p.m., the Candy Cane Hunt, which is located at Fernwood Park, Vista's Park, Spring House, West Park, and Coverbridge Park. Wednesday, December 13th, at 10:00 a.m., is a meeting of the Civil Service Commission. Wednesday, December 13th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., is the first winter open house of the township with more details posted on the website. We encourage you to come out for that and learn more about governmental services and how you can contribute to the township. Thursday, December 14th, 7:00 p.m., Emergency Management Services Meeting, which is at the Sitronea Emergency Center. Monday, December 18th, 10:00 a.m., Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Wednesday, December 20th, 7:00 p.m., and then Friday, December 22nd, and Monday, December 25th, the offices are closed for the Christmas holiday, and then Monday, January 1st for New Year's Day. Tuesday, January 2nd, is the reorganization meeting of the Board of Commissioners and a regular business meeting as well at 7:00 p.m. Finance Department would like people to be aware that payments made after 10:00 a.m. on Friday, December 29th will be processed on Tuesday, January 2nd, '24.
Good. Thank you, Tom. Just to reiterate, the open house, Tom, if you would, just elaborate on that a little bit, we're going to have tables with each department for residents to learn about the workings of the township.
Correct. Each department will be represented, represented by at least one member of their respective departments. We can explain the departments, we can explain the associated board or commission that may be most applicable to the departments. For example, Planning Commission with Community Development or Environmental Advisory Council with Community Development. Yeah, we, we're doing this to try to show all of the services that the township provides and to try to garner more support for the boards and commissions, the citizen boards that have vacancies.
Excellent. Well, thank you and all staff for putting this together. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for, you know, we had a citizen tonight asking about refuse. It's a great opportunity for citizens to plug in a little bit, to understand a little more in depth of actually how the township runs and how we serve the community, and I do encourage people to come out if they can. Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to take the opportunity to let the board know that the Planning Commission has voted to move its regular meeting night, starting at the January meeting, 2024. It'll be moving from the third Thursday of the month to the second Thursday of the month.
Good. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board on the upcoming meetings?
I do, I have a quick comment. Actually, it's a question. I was just wondering who did the graphics for the township campus and the graphics on the website, because they're, they're really beautifully done.
For the open house?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Lynn Matula and I believe Laura Harrier.
Oh, well, really well done, really nice. And I noticed on the website, too, the photos, everything is just so, it's beautifully done. So thank you.
We're glad to hear that. Thank you.
Just one question on the meetings. You know, Tom, you mentioned our reorganization meeting on January 2nd. Am I correct in assuming we will not have a regularly scheduled commissioner, Board of Commissioners meeting on Wednesday, January 3rd?
You are correct. The, the regular meeting will, the reorg in the, in the regular meeting will both be held on Tuesday, January 2nd at 7:00 p.m.
Have staff considered, or Tom, have you considered maybe sending an alert to residents? Because I know in the past, whenever we've moved the Board of Commissioners meeting, residents are used to coming on Wednesday, first and third of the month.
Yeah, we will advertise it on the website, and also we're sending a separate advertisement in the newspaper.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 9B, PA WALK Works Grant Announcement and Press Release. And Chris Stroller, if you would present.
Thank you. So one of the implementation items of the comprehensive plan, we have talked about looking into active transportation, which is really any sort of non-vehicular form of transportation, transportation safety, looking specifically at kind of a safety analysis of our roadways, and the larger idea of having this all in a transportation plan, that something can, that can guide sort of policy and, and potential projects. So over the past several months, staff has been looking at all of the goals of these items, and we are very happy to announce that we've received $20,000 in a grant through the PA WALKS program. This is through the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Downtown Center. And this is to support the development of an active transportation plan. Along with this active transportation plan, that will look at bicycling, pedestrian, really all forms of non-vehicular transportation. We want to certainly roll in transit and access to transit and accessibility and connectivity for really all of our users, however they're traveling without a vehicle. This plan, we are also dovetailing into what we're calling our Safety Action Plan, which will look at both non-vehicular and vehicular safety hazards and try to develop an idea of where we need to put emphasis in having safer roadways, really with the idea of eliminating, you know, fatalities and very serious injuries. I'm excited for this plan, and we really just wanted to kind of share that with the township. We are looking with the board, we're looking at proposals from consulting firms, planning and engineering firms to help put all this together. So we will most likely in the December, the next December meeting, come to the board with some proposals there to really look at starting this plan in 2024. But if anyone has any questions on kind of the, the goal or the grant, otherwise, look forward to a little bit more information at the next Board of Commissioners meeting.
Excellent. That's very good information, and congratulations to staff for submitting this grant and being awarded. I will point out in your note, we are the only municipality in Lake County to receive the award, so well done to staff for seeking this grant and applying. And I look forward to the next meeting to see what you have in store.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this agenda item? Moving on to agenda item 10A, Direction Discussion, we have Solid Waste Recycling Routing and Optimization Study. Tom, if you would present.
Thank you. As previously directed by the Board of Commissioners, the township is seeking to evaluate the solid waste recycling yard waste program on a, on a comprehensive basis by an independent professional services firm, so that an independent analysis of the solid waste recycling collection system method, including collection days, collection routes, waste and recycling route workload, tonnages, and various time metrics associated with the collection, travel, units per day, and non-service time can be evaluated. So with that, I've worked with SCS Engineers, which is a firm that specializes in solid waste environmental assessments, to put together a scope of work that would accomplish that. So the scope of work essentially is broken out into two major, two major components, Task 1, which will be solid waste recycling program evaluation, and Task 2, which is a route optimization study. So Task 1, it includes a, an evaluation of the overall program for disposal practices of residential waste recycling, and includes kickoff meeting and requests for information, policy analysis, so reviewing the current standards, ordinances, and service policies, including all education and outreach materials. Includes a financial analysis, so looking at the revenue and cost elements of the township's solid waste recycling program, including customer pricing, disposal tipping fees, material quantity estimates, manpower and equipment resources, capital and operational costs. They would provide a model of these costs to assess the overall financial health of the program. Operations analysis, they would solicit and review information regarding physical operations for the solid waste recycling management system. They would also review the contracted collection services provided by J.B. Mascaro in 2024. They will review the contract with Mascaro and observe operations where feasible. And they will also look at the service area map, number of households it serves, and cost information. It also includes a time and motion studies, so they will actually follow route collection crews to measure overall route travel times, collection point stop times, productivity rate, set-out rate, facility wait times, facility travel times, traffic conditions, set-out issues that impact collection times, access restrictions, safety issues, and equipment constraints that would be used in the route optimization model. They'll look at the existing route baseline, so that involves looking at the current number of routes and time it takes to collect the routes that would be assessed for residential waste recycling. They'll utilize scale ticket data as available and infield time and motion studies to assess current productivity and resource needs. They'll also take a look at our GIS parcel data and solid waste database to develop a route optimization map, model, and routing parameter, parameters. They would review the input data and assumptions with the township before finalizing the baseline model, which includes the maximum weight capacity for each vehicle, wait times at the township's disposal facility, material weights collected per route, hours per route, and other information. So basically, the model can help answer some of these questions. Are crews fully utilizing the workday? Are the stops per day per route enough or too many? Are collection vehicles being filled sufficiently before traveling to a disposal facility? SCS will make a report of these performance indicators and that for the use of the township. Task 2 includes a rap, route optimization study. So they will look at new route scenarios, so using the information obtained in the baseline collection model from Task 1, the township and SCS can explore strategies to optimize the collection system for solid waste recycling. So for example, scenario one optimization with no scheduled changes, scenario two optimization with service frequency changes. The analysis will also include route development, so looking at the routes for the selected scenario, and customized route maps. So with that, that's a total cost of $70,900. We've budgeted more than that, so two, about $200,000 for '24. Separate from this, the DEP would, would be, my understanding, would be inclined to provide the township with a technical assistance grant. the township with a technical assistance grant to look at our yard waste program. So that amount would be $7,500 of the grant, which would, has no match. So at this point, since this is a 24 budgeted item, I'm not seeking official action, I'm just seeking your input as to whether this is an adequate scope of work for what was previously discussed.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for researching different vendors for this. SCS certainly seems like they've got a scope of work that satisfies most of the questions that the board posed when we went through this contract over the summer. So I am certainly in favor of moving forward, giving you direction to seek a contract with this company to assist the township. I was curious if a study of this kind of our collection system has ever been done in South Whitehall?
Not, to the best of my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Diane sort of took half of my question. Has a study of this been done in any other municipality in this part of the state? If so, has it yielded some positive data results?
Yes, so while this one is more comprehensive in overall scope than some of the other studies I've seen that have been funded by DEP Technical Assistance Grants, there are a number of particular components that are pulled out of this overall study. So essentially, if you go to the DEP website, there's technical assistance grant funded projects, of which the deliverables are on the website. So if you review those, there's been some successful studies with outcomes reported. Usually, it's more narrow in scope for those projects. Our project would pretty much encompass everything. So for example, some communities maybe would only look at one component of this, maybe the route optimization, or the yard waste programs. We're kind of looking at everything from top to bottom all at once. So to answer the question, yes, you know, there is a template out there in terms of communities using this data to help facilitate better programs or more efficient programs.
I do have a question as well, and Commissioner Roth, you took my question. Other municipalities using this? How about any local municipalities right in our area? Have they used it? And are our local haulers, are they used to working with these agencies?
I'm going to say I don't really know exactly what local municipalities have used. I don't believe they've done a study of this scope, looking at the DEP website. And the haulers, I believe, generally speaking, are used to working with this, because you can see the results of the other studies that have been conducted, so they have to get that data from somewhere.
Great, thank you. Any other board comment or question? Public? Okay, you have what you need from us?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Very good. And to item 11, Old Business, we have nothing listed. Then to item 12, courtesy of the floor, again, opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any non-agenda items. Anyone online, Chris?
If anyone online would like to make a comment, you may unmute yourself now.
Hearing and seeing none. Agenda item 13, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We have no executive session scheduled, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.